Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the District of the Board of Directors of the District of about 105 Fort Worth, Port Isabel, Texas, on December 16th, 2020, at the hour of 5:30 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the Office of the District on December 11th, 2020, at 5:00 PM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551-041-551-050, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum. We have present myself, Mr. Friedman, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Barrow. Joining us late will be Dr. Lallan and Mr. Starkey. They've notified us that they will be arriving shortly. If I may, please have everyone stand for the Fledge of Allegiance and the invitation.
(Inaudible)
Heavenly Father, please bless us this day and let us have a good meeting and just listen to the words from our staff and scan that knowledge accordingly. Say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Moving on to item three, invitation to the audience for public comments. Board, staff, audience members, Zoom members now. Anyone like to discuss or share anything? Thank you. Let's move on to item four. Consider to discuss for possible approval the minutes of the regular meeting from November 16th, 2020. Motion made by Mr. Donahue. Second, second by Mr. Water. Are all those in favor? They are. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move along to item five, General Managers' Report. Carlos.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, members of board, and welcome to our meeting again. Just wanted to mention on the COVID report that I had there for the last month, if you can see there that we had 10 testing that we did for the, these are our employees. Four of them were negative and three positive. And we're still trying to wait on the three that are pending until they come out negative. We'll get those results and possibly we'll know at the next board meeting's agenda. And then the next item I have is the American Water Board of Directors Conference that we had scheduled for January 29th through the 30th has been canceled. But if it was going to be onsite in person, now it's canceled. So we have to, if you all decide to join the conference, it'll be 100% virtual and you'll just need to let me know or Daisy and we can register you guys, but not going to be in person anymore. So. And the American Water Board of Directors Conference is for board members.
So is it going to be by Zoom strictly or what's kind of?
That's what it is, like Zoom.
So we'll be able to log into the seminars and sessions like that time kind of used to be, you know, how it used to have like five sessions a day or something?
Yes, yes.
We'll be able to log into each session.
It's not the same as being there, then it's kind of hard to follow too because.
What about here? Sorry.
So if you decide to attend the conference through virtual, that is also, we can register you. On the other one that I have here would be, I want to have the workshop that's in January, possibly the 13th. And this one's for capital projects that are coming up for, we call them CIPs, which are capital improvement projects for the next three years or so. But we can give the board the full reports of the project that we may have that we need that are not approved yet. And also the financials, how the financials work and be on an update at that time on how the financials work and what we can do for the capital projects or what we can't do for the capital projects. So January the 13th, I recommend if we can have that workshop, if you all decide to have it before the meeting, or we can do, I don't know about Saturdays.
How much time do you think we need to cover in that?
I think it'll be hours or so because I think it's quite a few projects that we need to let the board know. And the other one is the open meetings that's together also, Board of Directors' responsibilities and duties for our attorney will present and using those to work.
What about that class that we had to take that Orlando administered?
That one is going to be coming up soon. You just let us know when and that one can be done too.
Okay.
Yes, so.
Is that an annual or is that a one-time? What was the, I can't remember.
According to what I can do, it is an annual, an annual. Yes, and then usually it's updating what we've gone through before and reminding us of what we have to do, what we don't have to do if there's a fraud involvement or emails that are not compatible to our needs, you know, that there's sometimes if we have an email address that's not, they use it for fraud or give them to the computer system and put the logs in there or.
They're two different deals, but I just wanted to also talk about that one too.
Okay, so what else? It's once a year, that leaves up everything's up to date again and reminds us.
It's a training on cybersecurity, email use, proper.
And we have two board members, so I think we all should attend that one again. That one will be, I don't know what the dates are on those.
As soon as they get more information, I will update everybody on that.
Okay. So question I have here is, if the board decides to have the workshops before the meeting, it'll be the most about an hour and a half to finish the capital projects and financials and then the open meetings and the Board Director's Responsibilities would be about another 30 minutes or so. So two hours.
We want to knock it out in one day on a Saturday morning or knock it out with two meetings beforehand before 4:30.
I don't mind doing a Saturday like we've done, but got to make sure people with kids up here can do that, if I'm just one.
Saturday, for me, which Saturday would be the question?
Would be January, we don't have the data.
Right, early, right.
The 13th is Wednesday, the first meeting of January, the 13th, and then the 9th would be the Saturday.
Yeah, we would want to go early.
One Saturday would be the 9th and then the other one would be the 15th. 16?
Are you in town?
Yeah, 16th. Either the 16th or the 9th.
8:00 AM.
Yep. All right, the 9th is great.
9?
8 o'clock.
I know earlier is better, but this one says 9.
Okay.
Usually about 9 o'clock, we open here about 8:00 and then you'll have breakfast. And then 9 o'clock we start and she is by then.
Can we have carb-free breakfast options?
Daisy's the one.
I looked at the appropriate person.
That's not for everybody. I don't, I don't have carb-free. I want a carb-free option.
I'll just scrape my pockets. 8:30, 9, 8:30?
8:30 is good. We did 8:30 before.
So we'll be on the 9th then or the?
The night Saturday. 8:30 AM.
To knock all of this out and get it all out of the way, is that correct?
Yes. Brian, are you okay with that one? Saturday, the night?
Oh, we didn't ask Brian.
You need to be here to present the open meetings and Board of Directors' Responsibilities, okay?
We'll golf afterwards, Brian.
All right. I'll be here, absolutely.
Okay, that's all, that's all I have and I'll have it here for January the 9th and start a meeting with.
And I'm blocking two hours for this?
Yes, correct, yes. Any other questions you all may have, we can go to capital projects, financials, and then open meetings, report.
Thank you, Carlos. Let's move along to item six, Director of Operations Report.
Members of board, presenting the November service calls, callouts. As you can see, the November this year compared to November of 2019 shows approximately 24 or shows 24 more called, callouts than last year. And most of these were like in disconnected customers. We had an increase there of 20. By the same token, on full meters, it was down by 13. And it just fluctuates on different, on different orders that are processed. Does anybody have any questions on the distribution side? The next page shows the service calls and callouts for collections. And this will show a decrease of approximately 35 for the month of November this year compared to November of last year. And most of those calls were on preventive maintenance. That went down quite a bit, but it did go out on clean out and install repairs. I, so that kind of makes up the difference. Then following report, you have the pre-treatment and disstation operational report. As you can see, the, the increase in contact with existing food service establishments went up and pretty much the grease trap or grease interceptors inspections were, remain the same. Everything is pretty much the same. The only other difference is there was a increase of five additional disstations that were worked on as far as removal of fog and cleaning the clothes and so on. And that was an increase of, from October of this year to November, from one month to the other, we had an increase of 11 additional callouts there.
How many FSCs are there? Food service establishment, are there?
Thank you. No readings. Board members, chairman. Exac amount, not sure. That's a list I'm still working on.
So we're out on. So you're basically, this is your cup of tea, this is you doing all this stuff? Very good. I'm just going to comment roughly 60 probably the entire number today. Thank you. Roughly. How many have we made contact without a 60, do you think, total? You can just guess, it's half?
No, around half.
Around half?
Yes, sir.
Is there a particular goal, Mr. Gomez, that we have to make contact with new ones every month?
We make contact with new ones as they come in and make sure that it started off on the right foot, especially with the size of the grease trap, because that's where normally we have, we've been having a lot of problems in the past.
I see. So when it says new FSC, that means like a new restaurant.
New business.
Okay, great. So contact with existing is one that's already, good. So do you have a certain number that you're trying to meet with every single month of ones that already exist? Like we, you know, we want to visit with everybody, right?
That's right.
Yeah. So it's our goal to be like, hey, every month you got, we got to hit up 10 of them until we see them all?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. How are they treating you?
Good. They've been really receptive to us. What helps or has assisted us tremendously is the communication we've had with Port of, Golden Porters and the Southside Drive and Golden Porters, the environmental department, Victor Valdez.
Going together sometimes?
And the other departments. At the time, when Frankie called it up and daily volunteer and called Frankie up to visit with them and let them know that they are 100% behind us as far as trying to get paid care of all of this.
Any, any new food tour establishments that approach the city for, of course, obviously permits and whatnot?
Yeah.
City of Southside Drive or city of Port, when they contact you, contact with me right away and we figure out what their, their plan is and I visit the site, providing with all the necessary information that they need to properly size the grease trap according to their, their.
Have we been finding some ugly stuff when you get there, some of these old ones?
Yes.
So this is well worth it, what we're doing, I hope?
Yes, yes. We're actually in talks right now with a franchise here and of course go in on why whose grease trap was tremendously undersized, of course, nobody was overseeing this beforehand.
Sure.
So I'm working with them very closely and they're, they've been really receptive in giving them access to all the plumbers, basically I do work around our area because of course you know to affect our bottom line positively, you want to work with plumbers around our area. So they're going to upsize their grease trap. It's, it's a, it's a work in progress and very slow. I'm just going off of the pre-treatment program and what other cities are doing as a guide, of course, the national pre-treatment program.
If there's anything you can do to help you out, help facilitate it, let us know. Hopefully you go to Pirates Landing to give you a little lunch or something.
Or dinner. All right.
Of course, this overall helps the infrastructure for the water district.
Sure.
And as well as the wastewater plants. Any questions, any inputs in the list? Thank you. The next item I had was the preliminary changes to pay scale for the operational department staff. And basically what it boils down to is that looking at the, at the staff that have these licenses, PCQ requires that all staff, wastewater, water, or any other, the other two collections or distributions that do any kind of work or testing requires to have a license. And they start off with a D license, a C, D, and A. And we currently have all of those licenses, as you can see, in that salaries, the presentation that I did here, it has all the licenses under pay group 14. It's on the, on the following page. It's this page right here. It shows all the, all the licenses under pay group 14. And we feel that we would like to segregate those and give those with the A and B license, C license, a, a higher rate where they're recognized. And it shows their level of experience along with their years of, of work that they've had. And so that's what we're looking at at this point. The trainees, or I'm sorry, not the trainees, but the individuals in distribution and collection were under the misconception that they didn't require a license as long as they were working under the manager who has a license. We've recently found out that that's not the case. If they do certain tests, if they do certain work, then they need to have a license. So we're looking at collections and distribution, for them getting their license. Does anybody have any questions from this?
Is this an action item?
No, sir, not at this point. It's just preliminary work. We've, we're trying to base this also in comparing PUB, McAllen, City Harlingen, Mission as far as their starting pay, what is the starting pay that we have? And as you can see in that pay scale, on, on pay group eight, where you have your collection and distribution technician, they start at 960 an hour. And on some of these other cities, they had that, but they, they've already changed it. They've increased their, their rate. And so we're trying to stay on top of this. We have a, every year, we have a, I say around 12% or so of individuals that leave the water district because of that. We have a rate of turnover around 10 individuals every year. And as in the water department, we've had quite a bit of turnover and they just finished hiring four.
That alone costs more than the cost of this proposal.
I'm sorry?
That alone costs more than the proposal on this.
Yeah, and having to train and retrain and so on, it just gets very costly.
But I think everybody in business knows that turnover is costly and anybody who does business. So the part about the license, I like too, the increase, it gives an incentive to go ahead and get their license and knowing that if they get A, they're going to be this way. But the main thing is, and we talked a little bit about getting a comparison, you said the titles are a little different in some of these different areas like McAllen and Harlingen. Compared to what our titles are, but what they're going to try to do, I think, is look to see what they actually do, their job performance, to see that we can't bring them up to date. Whereas, you know, right now you're at, you said two and a half percent increase or something like that?
On an annual basis, on their, on their evaluations, annual evaluations, they get a 2.5%.
Which I think that that's won't hack it in the future if we want to maintain them, but we might have to in our next budget or whenever it raises, once we know what we're up against and how far behind we are, if we're going to stop turning.
Correct.
Our meeting was just scheduled for the Saturday. That's for capital only. We won't get to talk about budget items such as this. Is that correct?
That primary capital.
Yes.
The next one meeting, which is after the month.
Do you want to add it in the, in the workshop? If we're going to look at doing.
It's a big budget.
Yeah. This is a little one, but if we're looking to do like something more comprehensively, I would want numbers from the area of, in comparison, so that I can look at it pretty clearly and easily and see where we are compared to other places. And then on top of that, I would want to know, what has already moved in the last, say, four years? What, what, how have our employee costs changed over the last four years? Because I know we've implemented something to be more competitive in the last two years I've been here. And so I just want to, want to make sure we're not getting, getting too far ahead of ourselves. Something like this makes sense, I think.
That's a layer. The one we're working on, HR Mary Gemmell, HR, she's someone that has other information that she's been working on from City Harlingen, PUB, and City McAllen. And then those are the competitive places that they leave to, to train them and then they leave to mostly PUB or Harlingen.
Do we ever get people from them?
We do sometimes.
Yeah.
Get, get some of them back here, but very minor, maybe wrong, what's involved. Eventually, we have a bigger picture of everybody, all the departments, right, Mary? That's what we're working on. And the hardest part of this is that she's looking at the job descriptions of each one, you know, putting everything together to equalize both their cities with ours.
Mary, one thing I would like is when we do this, I want to know the num, and this is fairly specific, the number of people per, per department, per revenue, right? So, you know, let's say that our revenue is 10 million and we have 80 people. How does that compare to other cities? Maybe they have twice the number of people, but twice the number of revenue. So do we have more or less employees in each of our little departments is what I'm looking at. Personally, and this is just me, I would love to have the best paid, but hardest working people as well. That's just, those two things to me go together. If you're willing to work hard, you should be able to be paid well, if you have that in your mind.
It's part of our succession planning. We want our employees to be here.
Yeah. Yeah, you should feel like when you work, if you work hard, you're going to get taken care of. And I mean, I think everybody up here believes in that. But those two things, we have to have both, right? So we have to say, hey, we're paying well, but we also have metrics to make sure that we're working hard. Like as long as those two things mesh, great. I hope we have the best paid employees around.
And the good part about it is that every department thinks that their department is most important. So I want to work hard because that's what they think, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
And I believe each one is very important.
You know, maybe at the end of the year, we, we should auction off a Chevy Traverse to the best.
So.
We're running.
Yeah, that's right.
To piggyback off of what Dr. Lallan is referencing, you know, it's a comprehensive breakdown that I think that we need to look at and it needs to also encompass revenue, right? PUV is huge, you know, and to compare ourselves to them is plausible, but we need to do it in an apples-to-apples manner. And it would be further than just identifying titles and making them similar so we can look at that personnel and what they're paid with the years of experience and the certifications that they have. It also needs to take into account how much money they're making as a entity of those, how much we're making, or as he put it, the revenue, like compare the revenues, which hopefully will motivate our departments to be a little more approval on our capital outlook, you know, lay budgets. So as we save more money and generate more money, you know, we can afford to pay employees more. That's one thing. And then the other thing, I'm sorry to interrupt Carlos, insurance, you know, I know, you know, former teacher and jumping from school districts and getting head coaching opportunities and various, you know, one thing we always look at is insurance. And I think we are now competitive with what we offer currently this fiscal calendar year to our employees from an insurance standpoint. So these are all things, you know, as we discussed, trying to keep our employees.
Benefits are right.
Exactly. They have a lot of value. So how does our benefits line up against these other entities' benefits? And we don't have to compare every single one, you know, pick, pick two, you know? So that way you're not doing a bunch of legwork for every water district all the way to San Antonio, you know? But those are the things that I would look at.
And we.
Cost of living is crazy, yes. So we need to keep it in our little box down here where the comparables are much more.
And that's why we do PUB, one of them is just Harlingen and then Port of the Elmo?
I mean, because, because my goal, and I think we all share this, is we want best water at the cheapest possible rate, paying our employees the most we can possibly pay. Like those are my three goals.
Tough balance.
It's a real tough balance. And so we really got to start looking at, you know, I just hate to keep going back to the truck, you know, coming up, but the brand new 350s with all the tricks, you know, I mean, like we got to really look at our capital expenditure so that we can do those things within our budget that we have, which is a little more humble than a PUV.
And so far, what I, what I have seen on their pay scales is the licenses, the licenses, they, it's going to be hit differently. They don't have it in one pay scale only. They have it in.
Every one license, yes, yeah. I think that's important. Why would anybody go get a license?
It's a type of a degree, basically, a license.
Yes, because on insurance, is it mandatory? You have so many people on the insurance with your insurance company? Like is there a certain amount you got to have on your?
Well, as a matter of fact, we have everybody.
I'm just going to throw this out because we talked a little bit about it. Young people at work don't necessarily take a bit of insurance as a benefit. I know when I was in my 30s and they said, we're going to pay you this and we're going to give you insurance. I'm like, what do I care about, you know, especially standard people, people without families and that. So you give them the option, but they haven't. And then maybe instead of.
If they decide not to get it, they, they can sign off together.
But they can't take the money instead of the insurance. But can, but can there be an increase if they don't want it? If you're saving, I mean, it doesn't have to be 100% of what you're saving.
It effectively is an increase because then it doesn't get taken out of your check. Yeah. So if you don't get insurance, you get the money out of your body.
How much of the pay quarter's value isn't there to not have the insurance? That's my call for that.
I'm just saying that if, not saying, say you're paying $500 a month for each person and I don't know how much they contribute to their insurance, how much do they have to pay?
They're paying for.
Employee only, they're employee.
Employee only is covered.
It's covered. So what I'm saying is.
Houses and others and children.
So employees covered totally and he has put an incorrect portion, correct? So the question again is if you had someone. So the question again is if you had someone that didn't want it and you were paying five hundred and they'd rather have two fifty and money or three hundred money, you'd be saving yourself money by not, and they'd be paying the employee happier.
Yeah, our, our contribution would be saved, yeah, we could split our contribution for their insurance.
And they might be happier with that, especially if they're in their thirties or twenties or whatever.
Or if their spouse has insurance, their P I S D or something, so we can look at all that. I think a workshop is the perfect place to disseminate all of this information, but again, I believe what we're trying to convey is we, we wanna have a comprehensive look at these other districts, and it's not just a salary, the salary, years of service, it's their certificates, it's the revenue for the specific departments, it's the insurance as well. Like, let's look at the whole picture as best as possible, and then we can, we can not only make this decision, but start to think forward for decisions that we need to make moving forward to, to eliminate the problem, which is the turnover.
A lot of young people don't actually look at the benefits, like Mr. Don, he was saying, they're looking at the actual pay. And, and with this pay scale at the bottom, they're getting maybe seven hundred dollars every two weeks, but they equate that to three hundred dollars a week. They get unemployment, more unemployment than they can by working.
That's a problem.
They're not even looking at the, uh, at the benefits.
Yeah, that's a problem.
Well, we do emphasize all the benefits when they start working with us, making sure that they understand that it's six hundred dollars a month. We, we pay them, we use them, and then, uh, we have a retirement system, which is a pretty good retirement system that we have, and everything else, holidays, vacations.
If we're gonna move this to workshops, then let's move along this side of them.
Final note, a couple of obstacles that Mary's been running across, that we've talked a few times, is that a lot of these places don't give us all the information that we're asking. So we're talking about requesting it to.
Free, uh, free information.
Yeah, free information, it's all. Yeah, that way they would have, they would have to give it to us. Okay, uh, the third item I, I had on here is concerning the managers for, uh, water, uh, distribution, collection and listation. Uh, I thought it would be good for them and for you as well, uh, to give you a little bit of their story as to what their department is about and what they do. And so wanted to start with Noah Canthu from the water department.
Hello, Noah Canthu, uh, water manager. Want to give you an overview of the water plant, basically, the ones that shoot the water. We draw water from the river, and somebody else update the river conversation, bring it down, reserve four, uh, water pump station, and, uh, of course, reservoir three, the water plant. We treat water at two different locations, right, one, one water plant, two conventional water system and a micro filtration system. The conventional system is a rapid sand filter, you know, dual media system, every two or there. It's, it's not the same quality as water plant two that has the micro filtration, which cleans up to less than a micron, uh, turbidity particles, et cetera. Takes out, uh, it's used for pathogens removal, something like that. We have currently twelve operators over there, we have four operators with a license, uh, one operator with a P license, we have about three operators, one of us with the S P license, and we obviously, we should, we have four new hires. Pretty much is my job, right, we, we treat water, we get the positive, we save the consumption, and then we send it into the trenches. Any questions? Oh, testing, testing, we're testing every two hours more or less. We go from residuals to T V S to, to really, uh, bacteriological sampling that we do monthly. Uh, we're getting close more or less to the twenty one thousand, uh, point where it would increase your bacteriological testing from twenty to twenty five, uh, bacteria test. And the bacteria is basically used as a, uh, test and indicator to test further for, you know, the fact that E coli and stuff like that that can be on in the water. Like I said, those guys are testing twenty four seven, holidays at all times, nonstop. Uh, thank you pretty much, if there's any questions.
How long you been a manager and how long you been with the district?
I've been with the district, uh, just over fifteen years, maybe about fifteen and a half, been a manager since two thousand fifteen. Uh, second in command from two thousand thirteen, more or less, as to.
Good, thanks for your service.
Thank you, Noah.
Thanks, Noah.
Good job, Noah.
The next manager is Joel Lopez with distribution.
My name is Joel Lopez, I'm the manager for the distribution system. I have nine personnel total, my department, uh, we acknowledge my system. I've been here twenty six years, working fifteen years as a manager, uh, been great, been a great ride for me. The distribution, uh, system, uh, maintains about two hundred miles of line, uh, which sixty three miles of raw water, ranging from fifteen inch to forty two inch lines. From the river to water plant one. We maintain close roughly about a hundred and thirty six miles of domestic, from water plant two to the north end of the yard. Anything in between from twenty four inch to two inch, A C and D C. We have seven thousand two hundred nineteen accounts, which means meters, and which.
What was that number again?
Seven thousand two hundred accounts. But sixty six thousand five hundred are active accounts, or is ranging from five eighths to ten inch, okay? It's one thing that Mr. Kudron, if you mentioned or not, the water district here has a superior water rating, which is top notch, you know, that's, that's good water, and that's through the hard work of them. And once it leaves the plant, it is our responsibility, the way to the plant gets to your businesses, to your homes. Good. The, the crew maintaining the distribution system by repairing water leaks, installing taps, uh, small line extension, any kind of repairs out there. We're out there till the job gets done. You ask about dedication and hard work, we're out there all Friday, this past Friday, from four thirty in the afternoon to six o'clock in the morning, working three different sites at the same time. So we got some dedicated staff members, for sure.
Good, yeah. I've seen that over the last two years for sure.
Absolutely, and every department.
How fast do you guys jump on something if it's busted?
As soon as they can find out, we're on it, with, um, Mr. Bowler has, has seen it as well out at the golf course, so.
Yeah, we could maybe use you out there, find some leaks for us, anybody who wants some moonlight.
Yeah, well, uh, me, we can assist and help it out sometime, sure, that's not a problem, uh, we are here to serve a public, you know, for sure. And you know, um, we have the AMI meter system, which we collect the rain without having to go out there physically pick them up. And like I said, it's about five hundred plus accounts. We have, uh, hubs, we have eight hubs and twenty collectors throughout the system from the, anywhere we tanked onto the golf course. And these are elevated structures, so instead of paying roughly eight hundred, a thousand dollars a pop, whenever somebody needs to go up there, the district, uh, has five competent climbers that at no extra cost, they climb up the tower, check the attendance, the wiring, even sort out the lights and top of the tanks. So we're, we're doing some savings there, I know the board's interested in savings, that's one way that we do it, for sure. I have, uh, like I said, Mr. Nava, my system manager, I know R is our meter reader, they're the one that maintain the M I system by daily, daily checking the routing system, the alerts. One fantastic thing about the M I system, it allows us to find issues over twenty four, forty eight hours, put a leak over there. Uh, leak or some kind of issue, we can advise the customer, uh, not to, you got a problem, something's going on, you wanna check. And sometimes we go the extra step and go out there and assist and try and find what the problem might be. We work closely with billing and with customer service. Uh, we have meetings with surrounding city, four days of our party, minimum, uh, accounting, whenever there's projects coming up that might affect us, we definitely double them and work things out. We do all this following T C Q guidelines, P U B guidelines, and different model service policy guidelines. So any kind of concerns or questions the customer has, they call in, and I encourage you, I let the customers know, call in the office, we'll give you a service order, so we can have accountability and a record of certain trouble areas, and that helps us with, you know, future projects. So that's basically all we do, and, uh, you have any questions?
Thanks, Joel.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, good job.
Uh, the next, the manager is the, with the collections department, uh, this is Joey Salinas.
Good evening, work, uh, Joel Salinas, um, the wastewater collection, uh, manager. Ray Martinez is our assistant manager, and we have four more techs in our crew. Our job description is we do sewer tabs, order complaints, we do sewer backups, broken gravity lines, uh, broken force mains. And we started fixing some manholes in-house, the ones we can fix, like ten, twelve footer manholes that we can work on, especially on the island. We do a lot of line spots for our contractors and customers that call us in for line spots for sewer lines. We do change, uh, manhole ring and covers. And our crew is on standby after hours every certain weeks, every. Eight weeks, six to eight weeks now to stay on standby for one week. Uh, we have about seventy nine miles of gravity line and twenty six miles of force mains. And about a thousand one hundred and eighty manholes. And our sewer lines are like PVC, also the sewer lines here, gravity lines are, are made out of tape. So, uh, we also have a preventive maintenance program that we do every, on a monthly basis. Like at the beginning of the month, we go out there and flush our main lines and vacuum the grease, okay, we find grease, so we call them up, yes, cause it's full of everything that's in there.
What's the strangest thing you ever found?
I'm not gonna believe this, but the last time we found a dead dog in there.
And now you get it down.
Yeah, I don't know how they did that, we have to call the police, we have to call this, everybody else out there, now, it's crazy, it's crazy. All that preventive maintenance program is to prevent the grease, it's like I said, wastewater sound. You got one more thing, uh, we deal with contractors and customers, and all our guys have their C D L. They have to have our C D L in their department too, and our guys are working on their, on their licenses too. We have a class one, class two, and class three, three being the highest for collection for T C Q. It's about it, it's a thank Mr. Goldman, Mr. Don and the board for all your support.
What's the capital equipment that you're in charge with, are you the one in charge of the vacuum trucks?
Yes, I have right here, we have a vacuum truck, a backhoe, a little jetter, uh, mini escalator, and we have three trucks that we use daily. Uh, we have two video cameras too, that help us out a lot. We have a dump truck. Dump truck, trailer, mini escalator, vacuum.
Is there any capital equipment that you need right now? What am I gonna see on Saturday the night?
Just got him some nice new toys.
I remember the vacuum one, I saw it.
Three years ago, four years ago, our vacuum truck. Uh, we just bought a new mini escalator.
That's what it was.
Yeah, we have to replace that backhoe.
Trailer.
Trailer, is there anything you need right now?
We're trying to get a new trailer. We've got, it's already approved by you guys.
All right.
Thank you, Joey.
Thank you very much.
Uh, one of the things that Joey mentioned is that they've installed manholes. These guys are not trained to do anything, they'll get out there and do it, uh, some of these manholes are anywhere from ten to sixteen, eighteen feet. And they've gotten in there and they've, they've done the job, they've done really good.
I remember those on the island.
Cost savings.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a very big cost saving.
The, uh, next presenter is, uh, lift station pre-treatment manager, uh, Priscilla Cobafan.
Disposal mine, good evening, board members, disposal mine pre-treatment lift station manager, uh, lift station senior operator, Arnold Lopez. Um, first of all, thank you guys for allowing us to explain a little bit on what we do. Uh, I'm gonna start off with pre-treatment, um, basically pre-treatment, uh, enforcing or implementing the national pre-treatment program. In our area, basically, in our area, uh, our industrial user or significant industrial user would be restaurants. Our, our main role as pre-treatment is making sure they do have preventive, uh, pre-treatment preventive devices, uh, specifically speaking grease traps, uh, for grease interceptors, uh, under the sink, grease traps. Lin traps for wash interiors, uh, sand traps or grid traps for, uh, wash it, or, uh, car washes. Um, the main objective, uh, and I know Mr. Lon, that's what's our main objective, our main objective in pre-treatment, the main, main objective is to prevent any pass-through pollutant, in other words, any pollutant that can pass through our wastewater treatment facilities and end up in our lakes, our rivers, our estuaries, uh, any wetland where our wastewater treatment plants discharge. That is our main objective, so our main objective is to prevent any hogs, oils, or creases to, to pass through, through our sanitary source system and on them to our wastewater treatment facilities, that's, that's our main objective. Operator, we know what gets through to the plants, so we're, we are a class A wastewater treatment operator, class B wastewater treatment operator. We do come from the wastewater treatment plants, we became an official department of the April twenty twenty this year, uh, which we appreciate. We've had, uh, throughout the years, a lot of ideas we wanted to implement at the lift stations, and, uh, we've been seeing them through. Um, as you can see on the screen, that's, uh, food service establishment here in town. We checked the grease trap, I believe that's a thousand five hundred gallon grease trap underground subterranean. Uh, that probe right there is called the dipstick probe, it's basically specifically designed for grease traps. And there's a calculation we do, we take measurements. As you can see under, uh, with the next slide, understanding grease rule and the twenty five percent rule. That probe that you see on the left hand side or right hand side is the actual probe, we take measurements on the bad soils and grease that of course are, are having settled or floating. We take, uh, measurements on the whole water column and any slather sediment that has, uh, settled to the bottom. We implement that calculation and it gives us basically the percentage that that grease trap is at, at that, at that moment of inspection. Um, and that, that in turn tells me, well, it's over or under, I inform the food service establishments, well, um, you have to get it, uh, come down immediately. And, uh, usually they comply. Yes, uh, we do invite them, uh, managers, food service establishment managers, owners, we do invite them to, to accompany us, so what I tell the food service establishment managers, so you can be well aware of the, all the functions. So what I tell the food service management, so you can be well aware of the, all the functions of your food service establishment. I have come across some managers that didn't know that it was there. So we, we kind of educate them there a little bit. On the, any questions on the pre-treatment aspect?
Do we have the authority to fine? Do you guys have the authority to fine?
We do have the authority to fine and it's, it's strictly explained or it's specifically worded in our chapter four of the wastewater service policy. That also, I'm glad you brought that up. I, every food service establishment I approach, I give them a pamphlet that we purchased with our, our budget, you know, our operational budget. In there are printouts of a small introductory letter from our behalf. The second item I insert is the copy of the chapter four wastewater service policy, which basically just defines pre-treatment. Also insert that page. Also, all my information. There's a grease, a tactic grease poster. I also insert that I kindly asked them if they would like to put it on the wall so employees can see. Various information like that, and I do have some information from Take Care of Texas. Remember, we, we discussed that I did make contact with them, they sent me a bunch of posters. So that, that's, yes, we do have the, the authority, of course, following the, the procedure. On the lift stations, on the lift station sides, us as lift station operators are charged with maintaining, operating the lift stations, every lift station within the living and Hollywood district with accordance, in accordance with T C Q standards.
How many lift stations do we have?
There's twenty, there's twenty-eight plus the fourth, or four, one at each wastewater treatment facility, which we also oversee on water plant. Oh, and the water plant one, the water plant two has a lift station, we take care of that one.
So thirty-three?
Thirty-three, yes sir.
Are there some that have different numbers? Because why does that say like LS thirty-seven? There's some numbers we don't have, like no, no lift station thirteen for bad luck?
Some of the stations have been decommissioned, so.
That's what it is.
Yes. Yeah, some, some you might find lift station thirty-eight on the golf course and lift station thirty-six at the north end of the, that, we have a lot. Yes, we do. The equal part lift station will be, will inherit that one. And on the, on the bio remediation or the chemical we inject at our lift stations is called Microsoft. And that's to help for odor and grease issues. And we also do fog removing, manual fog, what I term as manual fog removing. And that's basically, I know I've presented these slides before, is, is we, that's a lift station right there, thirty-one with a bunch of fog, patches of grease and other miscellaneous items that people just, just don't enjoy it. And we literally remove that manually. Nets and baskets. Nets and baskets. And that's how it looks afterwards. That's how we leave it afterwards. And of course, we, we do spray Microsoft here and there to help us a bit. And that's a prime example of the fog that we remove manually.
And that helps us out on the front of the road, we wear interior.
Yes. The pumps, our float, our float systems, which so the pumps turn off and on, grease can weigh down that float and either not let the pump turn on or keep it on indefinitely and.
Upon taking this fog removal, we've been able to put down on the boss of the Microsoft.
Maybe you compare last fiscal years Microsoft expenditure to today. That's, that's good too. I wouldn't, I can't say I, it's a team effort. We do, we, we, we hit it hard every day.
Yeah, maybe one question, have we seen a drop in the sewer backups or clogs, you know, that, those kind of items as well, I mean?
I think so. We also maintain, yes, that's Microsoft right there. That's just a basic five gallon drum. The green enclosure is basically a timer. And runs, runs off of electric power and then we push some bins and we determine how much that lift station needs per, per twenty-four hour period. And it just, it just has sprayed the hose, it's sprayed, just sprays for just a half a minute. And we also maintain the, anything revolved around the lift station exterior. I know we do a lot of fencing work ourselves to, to save on costs. We, we don't really like to outsource those items because it does cost a lot more. So we get with Sardines, Home Depot, purchase all stuff, we install ourselves to save on costs. Also, pump installations, we do, we purchase a pump. For example, we officially commenced the startup of that pump right there itself today. And we installed the whole thing ourselves.
What is that one?
That's our lift station twenty-four, that's next to the helicopter pad on the Garcia.
Why'd we redo that one? Is that just one of the ones?
Missing there? And as for T C Q, we need to have two. We do all those installations ourselves to try it. Because we feel that the pumps are pretty expensive themselves.
How long, you guys been here?
In April twenty-eight year? Oh, no.
Fifteen years.
Fifteen?
December was, the other thirteen was fifteen.
You get your, it's the first time I've seen you up here, Arnold. Yeah, are you, are you getting your next A? You have to go for A license?
I got a question. More problems with some than others.
Yes.
You know, and the only reason I'm asking this because of why the Saetos at the Easter grand, that one's always been a problem as far as the, as far as that. Is that because it's not adequate enough? They need a bigger.
That's the biggest one on my, that one pumps directly. That one for sure, which is on the, on the southern. So that one receives from.
Yeah, Gardenia South goes, gets pumped at that point.
All the way to the front. So that receives, yes, that receives the brunt of.
Why, just because it gets so much? Oh, there's nobody, yeah, such a problem?
Yes, I don't know.
My thought is very much.
It's like, is that by overtax?
We, we do have oversol, it's, it comes from the same company, from River Greens Office, from Microsoft, or there's a Microsoft. And it's oversol, basically it's a fifty-five gallon drum. And they're basically running a chemical through a series of pipes that come out of the lift station, which that, that's the bend. The H two S, it's, it's the media filters and it neutralizes the H two S. The H two S is the rotten egg odor, the pee odor.
I may say it from where it was to where it is.
Yes.
I think it really made a huge improvement. The amount of flow.
When we started checking the grease traps.
Yes, we, we started checking quite a few grease traps around the vicinity. And so on this rope, and it turned out a couple of grease traps around the vicinity, which were subterrains, which were thousand gallons and up. Had inappropriate covers. And that, the smell is, I would say it's worse than, I would hope, I would open the next station hatch and the, versus that smell. It was really bad.
Think there was a lot of property that got, so when you get those rains, that's when a lot of people.
The wind changes and the order of things do come, do come in and as the wind changed, it was bringing that smell on the.
And we have made contact with.
Yes, they did, installed the proper covers and all that. Yeah, that's something we do keep in mind.
Well, the pre-treatment you're doing at the lift station prior to the Holly Beach treatment facility, or the sewage treatment facility really helped a lot. I know we received all of those multiple calls last year. I think they stopped this year, but yeah, kudos. Great job.
We're, we're trying.
Yeah, anytime the north wind, I mean, now the north wind kicks and we don't, we don't have any issues.
And the last. Yeah, exactly.
And how long have you been doing the fog?
Since, say, April. It's something we, we've always wanted to enter into, trying to get a chance. And we know it works, it used to. That's what we used to do when we started. Any, any questions?
No.
I appreciate all of y'all sharing that, even I learned a couple things.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Hey, can we turn that arrow? Or up, so it doesn't turn on again?
I know Jason gets to his butt really.
Yeah, I think we're at sixty-seven.
And if I'm old, I know you are.
Thank you, gentlemen, for listening. At the next meeting, I hope to bring in the wastewater plant manager, lot manager, electrical maintenance and construction maintenance, so they can give you a free overview.
I imagine, yes, I think that's perfectly appropriate. I love seeing our managers up here. It's awesome for them. I think it's great for us. Thank you.
I am, am very proud of working. They.
With the exception of O L, I'm sure.
Yeah. No, these guys are very dedicated.
I want to.
All these guys and their staff, they're very dedicated. On side note, we do have, we do Zoom and, and meet the managers, myself, every Monday morning at eight-thirty. For the last three and a half years or so, we've, we've only missed less than a half quarter of the year. And we just go over what's happened and what we're looking forward to. And anything that somebody else may need that can help each other. They do have very good communication. They're working with each other and they help each other out.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Robert. I think this was very informative for everyone and I think it validates where we were going into our workshop, what's going on. Thank you. Any, any questions, comments, anything? We'll move along. Let's move along to item seven, Charles.
Yeah, I guess the first item we have here is just the status of our tax project, our tax bond project funding through Texas Water Development Board. Now that we got that authorization from the November third election, you know, really like to just, you know, submit our paperwork and everything moving. And, and I guess, guess the only, the only hiccup to that is, you know, there's some, some significant program changes to the drinking water state revolving fund. And, you know, with transition and funding, we kind of need to see whether or not there's going to be a stimulus bill coming out or, or there's a lot of unknowns right now. So really, the, the directive we've gotten is to just sort of park it until mid-January or February. And at that point, you know, we'll know where funding is going to be sitting. As far as, you know, in prior years, you know, you could just apply and they can just tack you on to the current fiscal year. But, you know, with a low rate interest environment, you know, some of the people have requested hundred million dollar loans. I mean, there's been more requests in the current budget. And so one of the program changes they've added is, is just letting a single entity requesting twenty-four million through the drinking water S R F. So, you know, we're a little bit above that. So we have to look for an alternate, you know, fund to cover the full amount. But that's, that's kind of the, the gist of, pretty much we'd be looking at state fiscal year twenty twenty-two to, to apply for funding. And so we should be seeing a, a project solicitation here in the next couple of weeks. Then we, we start working on our project information form in February, March third will be the deadline. They rank them, issue a draft, intent of use plan in June. And then finalize that intended use plan in August. And then that's when the letters go out to the invitations to apply for them. So, so since it's going to be tighter this coming year, we got to make sure our, our applications meet their criteria. We get higher in the rankings in that first round of invitations. That's, that's basically, and then I gave some flow charts here just to kind of further explain that process of, you know, why it takes a year to get to finance scene and close on a request. But that's, that's, that's kind of the, the update. I don't know, Noe, he knows him maybe online, if, if he wants to add anything.
He is on the line.
I am, Charles. Good evening.
Hello, Noe.
Hi, this is Chairman and hi, members of the board. First of all, knowing I'm also here with Australian and Hussain Company in Dallas. Congratulations for passing the bond referendum, very important for the district and, and its customer base. As Charles was discussing with you, there is a process of application submittal for the Texas Water Development Board funds. And as he said, there's about twenty-seven million six that were approved by the voters, of which twenty-one point five is for a water system, water system plant. Elevated tanks for about three and a half million and distribution lines of about one point six. Turned to about, you know, two point, twenty-six point six seven for that matter. And that's all water related. As Charles has indicated, you know, our process to go through the Water Development Board, it takes about six to maybe nine months, what we've been told. The Water Development Board is an agency in Texas funded by the legislature and sometimes by funds coming from the federal government. You're expected and required to submit a variety of forms that basically describe not only the project, but also what you may be able to qualify for. Sometimes, depending on the economic demographics of the district, you can get grants. We used to get up to four million dollars in grants. Now they're reducing that amount to about two point six million. Depending who applies, you're ranked. We suspect that because of the demographics of the water district and, and I'm moderate, that I don't, that I don't think a grant will be, will be, you'll be eligible for grant money. So all of it conceivably will be loans. The loans are, the interest rates on the loans are heavily subsidized. Right now, we've got indications that you could get a slow rate as one point three percent. And basically, if you were to sell this, this bonds, this loan out in the marketplace, we think that the interest rate that you would get will be closer to about two and a half percent, depending on the length of, of, of the loan. We've been running authorization schedules on this loan, so with two, two illustrations, one at twenty years and one twenty-five years. The shorter the, the loan, as you would expect, the higher the payment. The payments are made semi-annually and because it was voted by the, by the constituency, they are anticipated to be paid by property taxes. So if all of the bonds were to be sold by, by the district to the Texas Water Development Board, the interest rate we think will be somewhere in the neighborhood of about one point three percent in today's, in today's market. As Charles indicated, very likely by the time we go through the application process, by the time we get approval from the Water Development Board, and by the time we get funding, you may be looking at sometime in August of twenty twenty-one, or even as late as October of next year, before you get the funding. Today, we've asked on your behalf whether, you know, what would be the likelihood of getting funding earlier? And they're still closing loans that they committed to close for the year twenty twenty. And they don't anticipate to, to finish with that until sometime first quarter of twenty-one. In addition to that, the Water Development Board has now, through a referendum approved statewide, is now also going to be creating a drainage flood plan program. And they're going to have to, you know, probably hire more staff and attempt to incorporate the new rules for that. So we were running against, you know, just the, the, the standard process of, of application approval. And conceivably, by the time we access these, this, this funds, we could very well be, you know, a third quarter of twenty-one financing. a third quarter of twenty-one financing for this. Uh, a lot of these loans are subjected, despite the fact that you're getting a subsidy, they are subjected to interest rate environment, uh, because in some instances, the Water Development Board borrows money in the marketplace. Um, and based on what that loan rate is, that's where they discount, you know, uh, they apply a discount factor. And, uh, and thus, uh, uh, you know, the cost of, of, of the rate could be lower or it could be higher. Uh, we've been running numbers, uh, as I said earlier, at about two point three percent in a twenty-year loan and at about two point five percent in a twenty-five-year law. How does it affect a, a property taxpayer? Today, your taxpayer pays about four cents in property taxes. Uh, when these bonds are sold, if, if you go out twenty years, uh, the tax rate will go from about four cents to about ten cents. And if you go out twenty-five years, uh, it could go, uh, not higher than, than nine cents from the current four cents. So it's either a nickel or going out twenty-five years or six cents for going out twenty years. I, I, I think I've shared this with, uh, with your staff and, and I can't tell you, I can't, I can't, uh, really, uh, say enough good words about your staff. We met last week. I think I gave, uh, Eddie Salazar, uh, a, a presentation on, on the numbers. Eddie, if you, if you could be kind enough to pass those to the, to the board at your convenience, that'd be great. So that if you have any questions regarding this, uh, you know, what we anticipate, uh, going forward, uh, don't hesitate to reach out to us or to Carlos Galván. And we'll be happy to answer his questions. That's all I got.
Thank you, Noe, and happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you, Mr. Chairman.
Right, so I guess we can move on to the second bullet in the engineers report, uh, which is the Laguna Vista Echo Park subdivision. Uh, measure where we just approved the, uh, annexation very recently and the entire subdivision without really knowing what the lot, thirteen acre lot owned by Laguna Vista was going to be when it fell off. And, uh, oh behold, we have a potential developer, um, who, who has a master plan set up through the architect, same architect from the Echo Jersey Center. And, uh, they had requested or prepared an estimate for their annexation fees, uh, for them to, you know, send to the bank, try to get their financing stuff. And so that that's included in the, uh, in the, in the board packet. You know, it's kind of, we're looking at, at a development, you know, hundred, uh, bottom cabin, kind of a, you know, RV camping type, uh, setup. And, uh, their demand, we're thinking is going to be about, it's about thirty-six acre feet per year would be their demand. So between the water rights and their buying fees for water sewer treatment capacity, you know, looking at a potential annexation fee and a new connection of about, you know, three hundred five thousand. So that's, 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 uh.
I don't know. I was wondering myself. Glamping though, that's the thing now. My kids are educating me, but now we can go right around the corner and glamp. Yeah, so, um, I know we're in infant stages here. But, uh, how do we protect ourselves with a project like this from turning into uh, an L I V kind of situation where it starts off as one thing and it evolves into something much differently? Is there something with the legal verbiage or, you know, does this make sense, this point that I'm trying to make? Like, we're starting off with the glamp and if we turn into a residential.
Models and it turns into.
Yes, sir.
I would, yeah, I would say if they start to look at any kind of replanning where they're trying to subdivide lots, that would be time to address their, you know, review tonight. Uh, at the planning stage, it requires the, the Missouri District Signature change laws and how they're set up.
And how, and on our end, I guess, to further get some details, we're not just going to bring it to one meter like we did at that location, right? We're going to bring it to every single.
Oh, okay. Yeah, this, this quote is pretty much giving, um.
What's this quote based on? One tap or multiple?
It's a four-inch domestic meter, a two-inch irrigation line and a six-inch fire line. And, um, and then that, and then if the food truck part component comes in, they'll have their own five-eight inch meter.
So very similar then.
Yeah.
To L I V.
Yeah, but here they, are, are they talking about selling these individual lots?
No, it would be a rental.
It'd be a rental range.
Yeah, it'd be a different. Think of it as a better range would change. Yeah, K O A bit, that's right.
You know where I'm going with this, though, right? So if someone else comes buys this, has a different vision.
Yeah, for them to be able to do something like that, I would think would take a replan. I mean, if, um, the, the way.
Absolutely would, yeah.
It's not intended to be sold off as individual units.
Okay.
Cool. It looks really neat. It's funny, we were literally just talking about glamping in the car last week.
In the boat.
No, in the boat.
On the boat on Saturday.
I have no clue what the heck they were talking about, but we'll hold.
All right, well, see that development coming fruition. Oh, and the other part of this, uh, is the, the offsite is being done through the economic development, uh, the town of Laguna Vista, it's working with the county. Um, they, they put the, it's the lift station for the site is being paid by the, by the city's economic development contract and sewer, uh, out one hundred and four million dollars to Stripes. And so their low bid for that effort to work, which, um, you know, for offsite extensions, that would be a developer apartment. But in this case, it's covered through the C D A contract. And their little bidder for that effort was Cornet Construction Company for an amount of seven hundred, seven thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars. So that's kind of a good component that self-approach that development.
Yes.
Thank you, Charles. Lot going on. Let's move along to item eight, discuss and approve a resolution, a resolution expressing official intent to reimburse costs related to, one, planning, improving, renovating and equipping water treatment plant number one. Uh, item two, planning, constructing and equipping an elevated storage tank. And three, planning, constructing and improving the water district's distribution system from tax exempt obligations to be issued by the Laguna Water Institute and other matters related there on to resolution number one, eight, two, dash, one, two, dash, two, zero, two, zero.
Yeah, this resolution was prepared by our bond council and it's, uh, you know, for us to, uh, start using some expenditures on our eligible projects, uh, prior to closing on bond. And then we'd be able to reimburse our, our fund balance, you know, at the time of closing. And so that's, that's basically just good to have this raised, decided to be able to retain that option to use our tax bond. And like, for example, uh, Laguna Boulevard, I just checked into the city of South Padre Island today. Uh, they've already completed their thirty percent set of plans. They're looking at trying to clear it out for mid-April. And, you know, we still haven't even, uh, got our design for the water upgrades through that same quarter. So, you know, we'll have to work with each other, but pretty much expedite that schedule.
Because that was the part of our initial, uh, cost savings vision was to fall in line with them as they do their works. We don't have to pay to repay, tear up or any of that stuff. Do you, do you feel like that timeline is concerning right now? I mean, talk about expediate. Do you think we can achieve that?
Well, I'm sure, I mean, they'll have to, I mean, I'm sure they'll, they'll work with pushing their payment, um, at least eight back to give the water or sewer improvements time to get in the ground. And so they can build the sections to help accommodate some utilities, but pretty much we begin with distribution as well.
Okay.
And, um, there's some key valves that everybody wants to fix, see that bypass line going and, uh, and, you know, just kind of get the distribution side.
Yes. Okay.
This is approve a resolution also.
Brian, does, does our legal have any comment on this resolution? Go for it.
Okay, I mean, I would, I'd have not had time. I don't think I've been at, Charles, have I reviewed this?
Uh, no, it's, it's gone through, uh, prepared directly by McCall, uh, Parker, St. Gordon.
Yeah, so I, after, with not reviewing it, uh, Mr. Lana, or Dr. Lana, I'm sorry, I can't comment on it. I'd be happy to review it and, uh, give you guys my comments on it.
Is it an action item to approve tonight?
It is an action item. McCall, uh, Parkville, or they're our bond counsel. They're, they're, I mean, I don't have any problems knowing that's their specialty, but yeah. Um, whatever, whatever the choices are, we can say able to, if need be.
No, I'm fine to approve. In fact, I'm motion to approve. No second.
Motion to approve by Dr. LaVon, seconded by Mr. Stark here. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
They are, and the closed non-motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to item nine, consider and discuss for possible approval of revised district boundary map.
Yeah, this is a revised map to add the, uh, the areas we just annexed, which is the Laguna Vista Echo Park and the Beheal Point subdivision. And so this is one of the components we have to maintain a current boundary record to, with Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. And you'll make sure this is, that these properties are, are tax-able to get down to invitations.
Action item?
Yes.
All right, sorry, you have more to say?
Yeah, no, no, we're good. Uh, the full size, they're around here for us, for everybody to sign.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for approval by Mr. Stark, seconded by Dr. LaVon. They're all in favor?
Aye.
They are, none opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Let's move along to item ten, consider and discuss for possible award of construction contract for rehabilitation and improvements of clarification, uh, for occasion basins at water treatment plant number one, bid number W T dash two zero, one, one, dash, zero, one.
Well, yeah, let me, let me hit it where it says it wants to be with the, the, uh, end of the video.
Uh, evening, Chairman, Directors. Pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. So, uh, uh, so you may be aware, we went up bids for the improvements that are required for plant number one. Uh, so we reviewed the bids and as part of our diligence, have recommend, uh, have a bet and recommend, are recommending the lowest bidder, uh, as the most responsible and qualified bidder. So, uh, he came in at a one point five, well, one million, five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, which was right in the ballpark of our engineering estimate. Um, due to certain budget restraints, uh, we're going to be presenting an, an item after this one. Basically, we're, uh, leaving a couple items so that the project is what the district wants the budget to be at. Uh, but at this time, what we are here is, uh, just asking, uh, a project to be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder.
Good, thank you. Um, Charles, I'm gonna call you back up for a minute. So, um, we made a motion to move forward with this improvement to water plant one prior to us finding out that the, the, the bond was approved. Uh, for all those that may be watching in this particular board member, um, this is still necessary, even though we have a bond that was approved to take care of water treatment plant one to transfer it into a microfiltration arrangement, right? So this clarifier still needs this attention. This is very much work that is absolutely necessary.
Yeah, yes, the clarification, which is part of this construction, they, they take about a, it's about a, a one-year contract. All that's a pre-treatment to the microfiltration.
Okay, great. So this is, yeah, there's, all right, perfect. And then so this one point, uh, five, one, three, how far off are we from where we were hoping to be?
Uh, well, well, our engineering, our, our budget estimate is one point four million. And so there's some yard pipe that we're able to take out, which that's sort of, for this following item, we're automatically, we have a change order to get in budget. Uh, but I mean, we're getting the clarifier to me for the, the next one.
So we're about a hundred and thirteen over, is what?
Well, it was from additional yard pipe that we added. I'm trying to, because we're going to still have to address that yard pipe, but we can do it under the microfiltration contract, probably without having to see me personally in this B F.
Okay, and this money's coming from?
The water reconstruction fund we're using up on that.
Perfect. Okay, there's your only question then.
You can elaborate a, a little bit if you'd like. Uh, so we're accessing through this project, we're accessing, uh, clarification improvements, uh, population improvements, rapid mix. And, uh, that, that's a majority of one of that. Your, your main clarifier, which is clarifier number one, so water treatment, uh, number one, and call it a five M G D, five million gallons per day plan, your clarifier number one handles four out of those five and it's out of service. So it, it does the bulk of the reviving. Uh, that's the majority of the work that's being done here. Uh, you'll, you'll also need population equipment and rapid mix, which is being addressed here. And while we were doing our deliberations and design and discussions, we identified a few items that would be beneficial to take care while you've got a contractor there doing the work. And we included them in the, in the bid. That's all the yard piping that, uh, Charles mentioned. Now, that is not critical for your operations. And, uh, that's why we, uh, we're in agreement that that is, it is okay to remove those items so that the budget is where we need it to be.
That's what you're proposing, is remove that hundred and twenty thousand dollar item, which would reduce this to one?
Million, three, ten.
Yeah, I saw a summary, we want to scroll back up one page. Um, there, there's a, like I was proposing, we proposed to the agency and a couple yard pipes.
Okay.
After the change order, which makes that an actual item, our, our, our contract amount, including change order number one, going down to one million, three, ten thousand.
I like that.
So, gotta bring this up then, if that's the case. If we take out, we're gonna take out six and seven and nine. So if we take out six, seven and nine, Reno Works would be the cheapest one.
That's what qualifications.
Right, right.
So. So tell me about that, because they'd be, they'd be a hundred and fifty thousand bucks cheaper under that.
Sure, so, uh. So, um, we, we, we have to look at the, at the bid as, as a base bid. So if we look at it that way, they are the lowest bidder. And, uh, we are doing this item to be deducted after the contract is awarded. So it's not coming to play, uh, when considering who's the lowest bidder. Now, if we want to go down that hypothetical, uh, I did conduct some due diligence and in my opinion, that RP contractors is much more qualified to do the work that you are, uh, looking to get done. Uh, our, um, Reno Works, they, uh, from that, from the recent project, from the project experience they submitted, does not have something similar to what we're trying to achieve here. And I would be hesitant to say that due to the minor changes that we're trying to accomplish, they would be a, a more qualified contractor than RP contractors.
Thank you. Sense?
Happy to answer any other questions, comments or questions.
Forgive me, I don't know if we've met before. Who were you exactly?
I'm sorry, Isaac Wakua, uh, project engineer with, uh, Z O G Engineering.
Okay.
We, we met, uh, right before the pandemic hit and, uh, then.
We have the same share sense. All right, good to see you.
Yes, sir, likewise. Yes, 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 but, uh.
It's just me that's been there. It's not you, it's me. That's what she said. Long time ago. We're getting off track here. So, um, this is an action item. Any other questions? So what I would be posing to approve is what is on our board right now, the.
Well, yeah, our, our request technically would be approving the full contract amount on this action item and then the whole action item would be the C W.
Perfect. So then also move to, to do the first one, the two.
Motion for approval made by Mr. Starky for approval, uh, repeat that again.
Of awarding the bid to.
Awarding the full contract.
To RP Constructors.
Yes. I'll second, seconded by Mr. Donahue. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, none opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Now I'll make a motion to approve the change order number one to the bid that we just approved RP.
Motion made by, uh, Mr. Starky, seconded by Mr. Donahue. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, none opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to see everyone.
Good night. Thanks for sticking around through all that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, item eleven, consider and discuss for possible award change, order number one for the rehabilitation improvement of clarification and location. Yes, uh, item twelve, but I still didn't read the actual. We approved it without reading and.
All right, so you just read it and then now I'm moved to approve it.
Right. Consider and discuss for possible, well, I still have to read it, though. We approved it without even acknowledging. So we have to go back again, that's correct. Consider and discuss for possible award, uh, change item number one for rehabilitation improvements and clarification at circulation basins at water treatment plant number one, bid number W T dash two zero, dash, one, one, dash, zero, one. There was a motion made by Mr. Starky and there was a second made by, uh, Mr. Donahue. And all are in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, the motion carries.
That is why you were the chair.
Let's move along, thank you. Let's move along to item twelve, consider and discuss for possible award of the construction contract for an elevated water storage tank number three by a replacement project, bid number, uh, B R dash two zero, dash, one, one, dash, zero, three.
So in this item, uh, we barely had our bid open yesterday. And that was because it was a pretty tight schedule. We wanted to give contractors enough time to fit their bids together. And we did receive six bids and, uh, you know, the, uh, the, there was a pretty wide range on their bids, but they were often qualified bidders. And we do have a little bit of forty-three thousand five hundred from S P and P LLC, which we're recommending award to get that value sold.
There's a motion made by Mr. Starky.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. LaVon. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, none opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Let's move along to item thirteen, consider and discuss for possible award of change order number one for lift station number one and thirty-seven rehabilitation, uh, T W. Let's move along to item thirteen, consider and discuss for possible award of change order number one for lift station number one and thirty seven rehabilitation, uh, T W D B project number seven, three, seven, three, zero.
Yeah, this is our, uh, this is basically a, a requested change order to our existing, uh, lift station contract with Southern Trenchless Solutions. Um, we had, uh, been able to, uh, they've given us some pretty good prices and, uh, we can increase that, uh, con, a construction contract of plus or minus twenty five percent without having to force a rebate. And so, uh, so with that condition in place, um, we're, we're, uh, requesting to add lift station number two and the Port Isabel Plant Lift Station to the existing contract we have with, uh, Southern Trenchless. And, uh, for an increase of, let's see, I guess a hundred fifty four thousand five hundred dollars. So our original contract award is a six hundred ninety nine thousand three hundred twenty five dollars. And, and once we add this increase, um, the revised, uh, contract price would be at eight hundred fifty three thousand eight hundred twenty five dollars. And just to give you some perspective, uh, from the budget line items for these additional locations, it adds a surplus of about three hundred fifty thousand like contract.
Good, thanks.
We're on a roll.
We are, you're on a roll. So, um, I mean, you pretty much answered the question I was gonna ask, but I realize we, we came in lower with this particular, this particular part of the big picture, but we're looking at the big picture to anticipate we might come over somewhere else, right?
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a lot of, the, the lift station four, uh, which is the one in Washington, and there's, uh, Luna Heights, it's been received to be a point. Um, there's some major, uh, upgrades involved that was identified in quality assurance stage, so that's under redesign. The lift station ten is, is being addressed as well. And so we're trying to help accommodate what the antiscis is gonna be decreased, this contract that we're having put out for big then, you know, by getting some of the jobs overused on these contracts.
I see Charles is here to see everything to add to this, or are we on par for what Reese Nichols recommends?
Yes, sir. When we were, we went through it with, uh, Southern Trenchless and, and, uh, one of the big benefits of putting lift station, um, lift station two improvements in the Port Isabel, ways for treat plant lift station improvements in this change order. Uh, is to expedite, uh, the repairs of those two lift stations, uh, hopefully to make Francisco and Arnold's jobs a little bit easier, a little bit quicker. Um, and so we also, like Charles mentioned, we compared the, the pricing that we got from Southern Trenchless to, to our estimates. And, uh, the value came in, came in good and that's why we're, we're recommending to, to proceed with this change order.
Thank you for weighing it, um, and thank you, Charles. Um, I'll, uh, make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Starkey, second, seconded by Mr. Wagner, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, none are opposed, motion carries, thank you. Let's move along, carry on to item fourteen, thank you, Charles. Consider and discuss for possible approval of the financial report for September twenty twenty. Eddie.
Gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, Director of Finance, just want to, uh, go over the, uh, the, the last, uh, monthly report for the fiscal year, September twenty twenty. Of course, there's still, uh, pending final adjustments, uh, uh, once our audit is complete, uh, the, the audit is, uh, ongoing as we speak. But, uh, just looking at the revenues and expenditures, uh, the, the, the year began, uh, very well for us. Um, exceeding, um, our revenues, we're exceeding projections in the first half of the year. And, uh, they, they held short in the second half of the year, but overall, uh, we, our revenues came in, uh, approximately ninety nine percent of what was projected, uh, for the year. On the expenditure side, um, the, uh, the expenditures, uh, came in about, uh, ninety four and a half percent of, uh, of what was budgeted. Some of that is, is, uh, due to delays in, in, uh, projects, so we, we, began some, uh, social distancing with our employees and that created some inefficiencies as far as, uh, uh, projects, uh, being delayed. Uh, we had some purchase, we had a major purchase, uh, of a small vacuum truck that was months delay because of, uh, delays at the factory. Getting that, uh, delivered, all those, uh, created some, some, uh, encumbrances that were left at the end of the year. You know, that was, uh, purchase orders that were issued that, uh, the, the payments, uh, in the year, that's what, uh, two hundred and seventy five thousand, uh, as of the end of the year. Questions? I don't have any.
Knowledge.
Uh, it's an approval. I'll jump at once.
I motion approve.
Motion for approval made by, uh, Mr. Starkey, seconded by Mr. Donahue, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, any opposed, none, motion less carries, thank you. Consider and discuss for possible approval of the financial reports for October twenty twenty.
Uh, also just the, uh, the first report, uh, of, uh, the fiscal year. Revenues are, are pretty much, uh, as expected. Revenue started up, uh, a little high, but that's normal, uh, and so. You have purchases, okay.
Tap fees indicate new tabs, right?
Correct, yes.
Motion approved.
Motion for approval by Mr. Starkey, second, seconded by Mr. Donahue, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, any opposed, none, motion less carries, thank you. Let's move on to sixteen, consider and discuss for possible approval of purchase of two forkless for the water plant in the warehouse.
Chairman, members of the board, we have these two parts approved, uh, for this year budget. We're replacing a new unit and we're adding one more for, for the water plant. Uh, we are recommending for approval on our contract to Greek's agreement for the purchase of two farquies for fifty nine thousand five hundred seventy nine with ten cents. This includes, uh, uh, thousand seven hundred and seventy five for a trade in for the whole unit of that.
Oh, you got a trade in value for that?
Yes.
Any warranties with these new ones? Yes, sir.
Warranted, uh, twelve months for two thousand dollars. And manufacturing warranties for, uh, three years and six thousand hours on the power term.
I'm gonna approve everything today, I guess.
Motion for approval made by Mr. Starkey. I'll second, seconded by Mr. Donahue, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, any opposed, none, motion carries, thank you. Let's move along to seventeen, consider and discuss for possible approval of pump repairs to the submersible pump for lift station number nineteen.
It's one of these, uh, one of the three pumps that we have on that lift stations, uh, front out, as for T C Q, we need to have three functional pumps working every time. Uh, this lift station is three, because it's, it's.
It's a large one.
And it's, uh, sorry, no, I'm trying to. Uh, this particular lift station nineteen, we're speaking about earlier, uh, in front of Isla Grande. It has three pumps and they're literally taller than me. Uh, three pumps due to the fact that it pumps directly into the headworks of Isla Grande, the sore camp. So therefore, T C Q states we have to have three, three functioning pumps. It is an A P S pump, uh, it is precision pumps and pipe work, right? And, uh, they're the only ones that basically service A P S. We did last year or maybe two years ago, we did have, uh, one of the pumps repaired with precision pumps. It's actually, it already is still functioning today and, uh.
What are the, what's the, uh, likelihood of the other pump, the other two pumps, what's their state of affairs? How are they?
Performing.
Performing and their, their longevity, what's their future look like?
Actually, I'm gonna put it in the state people.
Okay.
Um, yeah, they, they, I'm not sure when they were installed, I can hopefully backtrack.
Yeah, the, they're about ten years old, twenty ten, twenty eleven.
Yeah.
They were, the, the pumps were purchased before we did the lift station upgrade, so we actually moved these pumps from the old wet well to the new wet well during construction.
Can we add that to our, uh, January ninth discussion about capital improvements, you know, anticipating potentially two more, which looks like comes at a cost of fourteen thousand five hundred? Is that a competitive?
Me, I, I, I forgot to insert a quote, I forgot to insert a quote on the new one, uh, so you can comparison to the repair. Uh, the new one is gonna be at twenty five thousand and some change.
So buying a new one at twenty five thousand is the life, anticipated life based on your experience?
It's a rough, it's a rough.
That's okay, I'll hold to it.
For a new pump of this size, it's more than twenty five.
Yeah, the, the purchase order from twenty eleven for one pump was twenty eight thousand. So it's, it's, and plus we did that all that time.
So you think it's more than forty thousand? Okay, yeah, well, if that's the case, then I'm.
Forty five makes more sense, but hold on one second, you just said twenty gig.
Well, that was ten years ago.
That was ten years ago.
Ten years ago, yeah. You know what, I, I might have been thinking twenty thousand on.
That's okay, I mean, future references, give us an opportunity to buy new or fix. Like, if we can always look at those two numbers, sometimes, you know, we might make the decision to buy new. Especially if you're, you're allocating fifty percent of what a brand new one would be just to, to repair it. And if you get a life out of it that is substantial, I would always bring us that information so we can make that decision. But it sounds like I have to make this.
How many, how many pumps run at, how many pumps run at one time?
Uh, they alternate, they have a triplex alternator, so the alternator basically, uh, basically tells, uh, hey, you turn on right now. And then when that flow goes down and, and disengages that pump, the next time the flows go up, it's, oh, hey, now you turn on, so the word terror.
Only one runs at a time.
Is even, so unless, unless we have high flow events, then secondary and then.
Are there ever a time where there's actually three pumps running? There is.
Yeah.
There is a need to have three, three pumps working at all times, okay.
Plus, when it's compliant, so.
Yes, we want to be compliant with.
Yeah, we, we gotta. We gotta comply, but my, my thought was, hey, you know, if we got three, if we got three and two are just a backup, well, you know, how good does your backup to the backup have to be? But if, if they're all working all the time, then yeah, you want them to be, or it's like, you want them to be working, so. Anyways, we're trying to set a world record today.
My motion to approve the bid.
Second. Uh, motion made by Dr. LaVon. Motion made by Dr. LaVon, seconded, seconded by Mr. Wagner, are all those in favor?
Yes.
They are, any opposed, none, motion less carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Carry on.
Thank you.
Item number eighteen, consider and review expenditures from November one, twenty twenty through November thirty, twenty twenty. Comments, questions, anyone want to talk about anyone in particular? Not, we get a motion to acknowledge. A motion to acknowledge.
Okay. Considering the expenditures from November one to November thirty, okay.
Motion to acknowledge by Mr. Starkey. Seconding the cause of all Mr. Wagner. Uh, all the board members are acknowledging, perfect. Item eighteen, let's move along to item number nineteen, consider and discuss for possible approval of instructing accounting staff to review and calculate the cost to transport raw water from the Rio Grande River to the district.
So I think it's pretty self-explanatory there, um, I'm the one that requested this be added to our agenda and thank you for doing that. Thank you, Daisy, for jumping through an exorbitant amount of hoops to do that almost the last hour. Um, I mean, just wanted to, wanted to look at it, um, and look at the methodology used to, to basically transport water from the Rio Grande to our role, to our raw water customers, just like it outlays right there. And I'd love to have the opportunity to look at that information in our next meeting. So, um, you know, we can establish whether we're, you know, at a fair rate for our raw water customers.
We'll work on it and, uh, I think, uh, we'll prepare, whatever we need to prepare for the next meeting and we'll have.
Eddie, can that please be according to general GAAP principles?
No, I'll go.
Um, I'll, I'll do my best. I, I don't, I have no experience with, uh, setting a rate, but I'll do my best.
Generally accepted, generally principles.
Yeah.
And, uh, I know that Mr. Wagner says, you guys in the county and his, uh, license, we'll work on it.
Just merely to transport the water, that's all we're looking, okay.
But it didn't need to be a, uh, action item though.
Yeah, it doesn't, I, I, I agree. I don't know whether to consider and discuss, but since it is, I'll make a motion to approve to suggest that you guys move forward to the following manner.
Second, motion made by, uh, Mr. Starkey, seconded by Mr. Donahue, are all those in favor?
Aye.
None are opposed, none, motion less carries, thank you.
Motion to close.
Item twenty, adjournment, uh, meeting is adjourned at seven fifteen P M. Thank you to all. I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday and a happy new year.